The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Thursday, August 21st at the Lakeville Public Library. It is 7:04 PM. I'm going to take a couple of things out of order here. The first one is the residents at LaBarren Hills LLC hearing, which is continued. We received a letter from them earlier today on behalf of the residents at LaBarren Hills LLC. I am ready to ask the Board of Appeals to continue the public hearing scheduled for Thursday, the 21st in regard to its request to approve certain modifications of the existing comprehensive permit for the construction of Phase 6. I am still working with Council, Amy Questle, to prepare a modification of comprehensive permit regarding the Board's approval of Phase 6. I apologize for the additional delays and hope that this is not inconvenienced the Board or Town Council. As such, please put this letter as a formal request. Our next meeting date would be September 18th. I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
I'd like a motion to continue?
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. Continue.
We have a motion and a second to continue to September 18th. A call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and Jeff has abstained from that vote. Okay. The Lozo hearing is now our second agenda item. This has been continued for a couple of months. We have some additional information we've received along with some additional revised plans that the applicant has brought in. I am going to start off by announcing that we have... You're recusing yourself on this, correct? Okay. So Anthony has to recuse himself, which means we have four board members who are eligible to vote. The way a special permit works, for everyone's understanding, and I've already explained it to the petitioners, is you need a super majority vote, which means you need four out of five. You can go fully with four, you just need to make sure you get 100% four out of four. So at any point during the process this evening, if you feel you want to continue and wait until you have five members to vote on it, you can ask us to continue, and I'm sure we would be more than happy to do that. So before I let you guys update us as to where you are, I am going to read a couple of additional memos into the record that we have received since our last meeting. And we received a memo from the Conservation Commission on August 12th. The Conservation Commission has reviewed the proposed project. The applicant is satisfactory. Satisfactorily addressed all the commission's concerns. The commission has no concerns with approval. I guess they wanted to state that twice. That's signed by the Conservation Agent, Mark Mitten. We also have another letter from the Conservation Commission Chair, Nancy Yates, dated August 13th. To the zoning board, all the issues of 301 Pond Lane have been resolved. Attached is a final peer review from Merrill &amp; Associates. This outlines all the changes and conditions that were necessary to protect Long Pond from any additional runoff that could have resulted from the increase in percentage coverage requested in their variance. So we've been told both by the agent and the chairperson that you have complied with Concom, which I know is basically told you you needed to check off first before you came back to us. So having said that, why don't you update us as to where you are at this point?
Sure. For the record, Nick, we're here. We're here for a special permit to demolish the existing structure and build a new single-family home, two-bedroom, which has been approved by the Board of Health to use the existing system to keep the house as a two-bedroom. I know last time we were here, the concerns, well, the major concern, I believe, was conservation. The Conservation Chair or the Board sent a letter stating that we would need to go see them, make sure that they're satisfied because of natural heritage and DEP and all other items. As you just read, we have satisfied conservation. We received approval last Tuesday. So we're here tonight looking for approval for the special permit. If you have any specific questions or you want me to go over the project a little bit more, I'm more than happy to.
Obviously, you've provided some revised plans, which we have all received tonight. Before I, maybe just for the record, I know they're included on here, but one of the questions also that came from the Board had to do with lot coverage. Has that been changed at all?
The existing structure has not changed. However, there's a new design with a recharge system, which essentially takes, I believe, 100% of the roof area and another drain on site into a recharge system, which is on the updated plans, which also helps with runoff for conservation. So those were the changes that have been made.
Okay. I will put it up to the Board if we have any questions or clarifications. Could you just give us a few moments? Absolutely. Just got this book in front of us.
So we, the, I'm sorry.
I was just going to explain, so right closer, so south of the page is the new recharge system. That wasn't on the plans previously. That's essentially the only change on that plan. My apologies.
Chris?
So the recharge system will handle the lot coverage from the structure and water discharge?
That is correct.
Okay. What happens when it goes into that system?
The recharge system?
Yeah.
So I believe the idea of a recharge system is to recharge the, so you have, do you want to explain the, you know?
Well, yeah, there's compartments there, so it's on a bed of sandstone, so all the water goes into it and recharges into the ground instead of running off into the pond. Just in case you want, you know, conservation's looking forward to recharge it into the ground instead.
And the design was changed to a lower-profile system, so we had adequate depth away from the water table in that area.
The existing lot coverage is 27 or 27 and a half percent?
That's correct.
And what are we going up to?
39. That's correct. I know there was some concerns last time we were here. We did ask a question before we went to conservation, how should we handle that? Because we didn't want to go back and forth. The temperature from the Board that I received is if conservation was okay with it, we would look at it favorably. And therefore, we went to conservation and received the approval.
Yeah, I mean, I'll comment in regards to, obviously, one of the reasons that we don't want to have too much lot coverage used is because of runoff, whether it's on the pond or not. So from the runoff standpoint, if you've complied or done enough with conservation, saying the water's not going to go into the pond and we're going to preserve, you know, the area around there, that checks one box. The only, I mean, honestly, the only other question would be is, does anybody have an issue with there being a higher density of impervious versus not against what the bylaw says?
And per the last meeting, I believe there was four letters from the neighbors in favor of this project.
Yeah, I do remember most of your neighbors were in favor of it, so we will have a second here when we'll see if anyone else has anything else to comment on, so.
Do you have any other questions, Jeff, or...
No, I just remember quite well that it's still, you know, almost 40%.
It's big variance.
Yeah. Have we given variances for lot coverage?
We have given variances for lot coverage. I don't know if we've ever given one for 39%, but we have given, we haven't given that yet.
We have.
We have.
Okay. I'd like to hear if the neighbors here, are there any neighbors here?
Yeah, we're going to do that in one second. You're up. Chris Campo, you have any questions?
One other point I may make, the applicant does own the property across the street, too. The two separate lots, there's only one structure on that lot. That isn't included in the calculation. So...
It is not?
It is not. It's just the lot. So it's a paper street, 301 Pond Lane. If you've been down, his lot and the residence is on the right. He has a garage on the left. Those lots are not combined, so per the engineer, he can only count that one lot because they're separate.
Is, well, this actually, what's the size of the lot? You said there's a garage on the other lot?
There is a garage on the other lot, approved and a lien to. The coverage on that, he didn't have a survey done of it, and that was done...
He should have.
Eight or nine years.
He should have done that.
Well, it would have clarified for us.
Yes, because the way, the way the law is interpreted, Amy may question me, is this a private way?
Yes.
And that you technically would own to the middle of the road then?
That's correct, but the lots are under two separate entities.
Okay. Any plans to do any other development on the other lot?
It's deed restricted.
It's deed restricted.
Deed restricted for, yeah, I can't have a dwelling on that property.
Amy?
There's also the Sears case, which does not allow you to use a private way for lot coverage.
Right. But he could use the other side, the other, on the other side?
No.
He can't?
Not if it's, not if the two lots are separated by a private way and in separate, they're in separate ownership.
And it's in separate names.
I don't think they're trying to.
No. No, the lots would remain separate.
Do we have anyone in the audience, neighbors, other residents who have any comments or against? I do not see anyone. You can't hear me, Jose, huh? Okay, well, I guess my mic experiment isn't necessarily working out, although we need to practice a little bit more, so. See, the problem is without the mic, I speak up. With the mic, I think everyone can hear, so I'm going to pretend I don't have the mic here. Anyone in the audience have any comments regarding this hearing? I don't have any other questions.
No.
Do we have any other follow-up questions on the Board? So as I explained earlier, you need four out of four. I am not in the habit of doing straw polls, but what I can do is at least ask, does anyone have any concerns or is anyone not happy with the revisions that have been done? So we can give them kind of a feel for whether...
Right, and one final comment. Last time we were here, I think I asked the same question, if there was any other larger concerns, and the consensus was if we receive approval and satisfy conservation, I'm not going to say it satisfies this Board, but we didn't make any changes due to the communication with the Board last night.
We got you.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, it's a fair point. We got you. Unfortunately, that can't hold us to what our vote's going to be, but, but, fair point, yes. We did say that, and I will say that, you know, the fact that you got Concom to sign off on it, that's a huge hurdle to get past, because I can tell you right now personally, if Concom said no...
He would say no.
Even if, I don't even think we'd have to say no at that point, but that would...
I don't think we would come back here.
That would be a big problem, so. All right, no one has any other questions, and kind of heard me ask if anybody had any major concerns, so you let us know if you want to continue it or if you want to continue forward with the vote.
We would like to continue with the vote.
Well, I need someone, yes?
Mr. Shannon, is the, is the two-bedroom, is that deed restricted by the Board of Health?
I believe it is. I went back and looked at the notes last time, and I believe they said as long as it stays...
Is it currently deed restricted?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then that's fine.
Yeah, I even think we have it on record.
The previous meeting, we had a letter from the Board of Health, which, okay, the Board...
They did, deed restricted.
So if you already have a deed restriction, then we don't have, then that doesn't have to be a condition?
No. See, I know they referenced that it's two... Yep, it's right in the letter from the Board of Health, so you're good. Do you have any other?
I don't have any other proposed conditions or anything, no.
Is anyone interested in making a motion?
Well, so we don't sit here all night doing it. I make a motion, we grant the petition.
Special permit?
Special permit.
No restrictions, oh, no conditions, I should say?
No additions.
Does anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the Board? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So, do we have 20 days, Amy?
14.
14. 14 days to issue the...
Decision with the town clerk, yep.
Issue decision.
And then there's a 20, then there's a 20-day appeal period.
We'll just call back up to Kathy, or will she reach back out? Kathy will reach back out, but you're always free to give her a call if you want to clarify.
What if it was in the same ownership of both sides of the road?
We still have the road.
Thank you, guys.
But they technically own the middle of the road.
If it's a private way, unless the grantor of the road retained fee, then they wouldn't, I mean, you're going off the derelict fee statute where you own to the center line, but you don't own to the center line if the creator or the grantor of the road kept the fee. Sometimes, you never know who owns underneath the road.
And then you send the town to go.
Right.
All right. As I mentioned earlier, I'm going to take a couple of things out of order here. I took one, the second one, and to clarify why, it is because Town Council is probably going to be involved, and I don't need to have Amy sitting here until the end of our hearing, meeting tonight. We're going to take the full hearing, which is at number 7, 225 County Street, and move that up to our next hearing. So we can have those folks up here. I am going to recuse myself from this hearing. My company does business with the petitioner, but we can turn it over to Mr. Youngquist. Before I do that, though, I am going to have counsel because, and the reason I'm having counsel makes a comment, because this is our first ADU that's tied into our accessory structure by law, so I need Amy to kind of explain that to everyone, and then, Mr. Youngquist, your job.
Oh, God, thank you. Let me go help him, Mr. Youngquist. God help us. We ready there? Mike?
Yep.
The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, in said, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, has amended conducting public hearing on Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, upon the petition of William Fuller. A special permit is requested under Section 270-6.3C-1 and Section 270-7.4 to allow the maximum aggregate building size to exceed the allowed 1,500 square feet. The property is 225 County Street, the application, and assorted documents can be viewed at the planning board by appointment. All right, Mike?
Actually, it's going to be us.
Oh, just you? Okay.
Good evening, Jamie, from Zenith Consulting. This is Brian Cave.
Yeah.
Did you want to do your part first?
Oh, sure, I can. It's up to you. Sure. So I just wanted to remind the Board that there was a recent amendment to 48, Section 3, that allows for accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet. So a portion of this accessory structure that they're looking for is going to be a 900-square-foot ADU. And so the way that you need to approach this is that you cannot deny the 900-square-foot ADU. That really can't even be taken into consideration. The rest of the structure can definitely be taken into consideration under the, under the bylaw, under C3. So I think you just have to keep that in mind, that the accessory dwelling unit cannot be, we are not regulating the accessory dwelling unit because that is exempt under 48, Section 3. So essentially, if, you know, if for some reason the, this proposed accessory structure does not, is not approved, they can simply go to the Building Department tomorrow and apply for a 900-square-foot ADU, and Nate would have to, Nate would have to grant a building permit for that. And then the other thing to remember is that they are already over 1,500, so they are pre-existing non-conforming when it comes to the accessory structure threshold.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Explain to us, Jamie.
All right, so this house is on County Street, a beautiful house. It was a double lot, or if you look at the mapping, it shows as a double lot. It's really one large lot, just under four acres. The owner of the property is looking to build an ADU for his mom, and they go through the process to get, we've been through site plan review, dealt with conservation, and this is kind of the final step. The part that I think puts us over the 900 square feet beyond the ADU is the single-car garage that's attached for his mom to park in. And then underneath in the basement, because it's a walkout style, we have garage door on that as well, to be able to put whatever lawnmower or anything under there. So it's those, those areas, the basement area that would have a garage door on it, and the single-car garage for the mom, that are the accessory use. And Town Council is correct, there's approximately 1,800 square feet of accessory buildings on there now, there's a few barns, but anyone that knows this property knows it's beautiful, well-kept, and definitely not noxious or detrimental. And this, the building that's proposed here, we submitted the architect's, it was beautiful. The owner's gone through great lengths to make sure that it fits in with the house long-term wise, so it's going to, it's going to blend in really nice. Even the angle of it matches up with how the house and the garage kind of, kind of have, have a little bit of an angle off of it. So we would entertain any questions that you have, but we are looking forward to leave from the accessory building statute.
What would be the lot, the lot percentage of lot coverage with this?
Let me take a look, but it's well under the 25%, Jeff. It is 21.6%. And that's, that's accounting for everything, gravel, driveways, everything.
Any Board members have any comment?
I'm just curious. Hold on a second. I'm going to have a few comments here from, from the Lakeville Board of Health. It's August 11th, 2025. The Board of Health has received the petition for hearing on 225 County Street, and the proposed dwelling unit plan shows two bedrooms. Please revise the plan so the proposed office does not meet the Title V as a bedroom, definition as a bedroom.
You should have an updated letter. I checked with Ed today. I thought it was sent out to Kathy earlier.
Okay, the Board of Health has received architectural plans for 225 County Street dated 8/18/25. The proposed dwelling unit building plan now shows a one-bedroom dwelling, which is in compliance with Title V. Based upon the revised plan, the Board of Health does not have any objections to the proposed dwelling unit. This is a letter from the Board of Health, August 19th, 2025. This is from, this is the same one. This is from Mark Mitten, Lakeville Conservation Agent, Wednesday, August 13th, 2025. 225 County Street, the Concom has issued the order, issued order of conditions, which means they approve. And from the Planning Board, from a letter dated August 18th, 2025, as a Thursday, August 14th, 2025, meeting, the Planning Board, the Planning Board has reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. Has any Board member had any questions?
Just curious on the square footage of the single-car garage.
It's about 500 square feet, a little bit over that.
And the two-car, low, it's about 900.
It's, it, well, it's a little bit more because you can see with the drive under the little bump out.
Yep.
But, yeah, it's somewhere around 1,100 square feet.
Yep.
Now, a question for the Board. Can we restrict garage space on ADU? All the law states, I believe, 900 square feet of living. Garage space doesn't interact into that, correct?
It does not.
So it could be 10,000 square foot garage for all we know, I guess, right?
So, so the definition of gross floor area, which is the 900 square feet, it says excluding crawl spaces, garage parking areas, attics, enclosed porches, and similar spaces.
So I don't understand.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Have any in the audience have questions concerning this? All right, hearing none. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion?
What?
I'll second that motion.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You know the whole deal, Jamie, 14 days, 20, all that stuff.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Send your packet, by the way, because you know... I know I did. All right.
Did you remember? No, yeah.
Okay. Oh, you're good. You're good. You're heading out.
Am I still the planning board next month?
Okay, so the next hearing is the Erickson Group, 20 Mysteria Street, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, as amended conducting public hearing on Thursday, August 24th, 7:00, on the Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, fund petition of Erickson Group. Special permit is requested under Section 270-6.1C and Section 270-7.4, to raise an existing dwelling, instructing new 28-by-30 dwellings as to be within the setback on a breach of existing non-conforming laws of property in 20 Mysteria Street. It is owned by Robin and Michael Murphy. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the Planning Department. So let me start off by reading a couple of items into the record. We did receive a, excuse me, we did receive comments from the Board of Health on August 11th. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing of 20 Mysteria Street and has approved a septic plan for a two-bedroom dwelling of a lot. The lot does not allow any dwelling larger than a two-bedroom. The Board of Health has only received the first-floor plan and has not received the second-floor plan. We request the second-floor plan to confirm that there is not a third bedroom on the second floor. I am going to jump over here. We did receive an email from Ed Cullen, the health agent, late this afternoon. I guess it looks like a revised design was sent in and is in compliance of the approved two-bedroom septic system, so check off that the Board of Health is okay with what's being done. Next, we have a email from the Planning Department. Oh, wait a minute, hang on. It says planning, but no. It's in regards to the septic, which is fine. Okay, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission, 20 Mysteria Street. Conservation has no concerns about approval of this project. And we also have a memo from the Planning Board dated August 18th at their August 14th meeting. Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. Okay, now that we're done with reading what I need to into the record, who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Well, my name is Keith Erickson. I'm from the Erickson Group. And so basically, you summed it all up. We're just looking to remove the existing structure at 20 Mysteria and replace it with a new two-bedroom, single-family house within the required setback.
I was just going to say, you're not going to take up any, you're not going to infringe anymore on the setbacks and...
No.
...in five with the number of bedrooms, which is what the Health's concerned, or what else it needs concerns on this. I honestly have to look through the material. Do not have any issues myself, but I will... but I will open it up to the rest of the Board to see if anyone has any questions or concerns. One, seventy? Campbell? Looks like you're basically taking old and putting new in place of it and not being any...
Yep.
...infringing anymore, so. Do we have any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? I'll entertain a motion if someone would like to, a motion to approve the special permit.
I will make that motion to approve special permit.
As requested.
As requested.
We have a second.
I second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. All right, now you're gonna do your spiel since I've messed up the last two.
We have 14 days to complete the paperwork. Then it'll go to the town clerk, where it stays for a 20-day appeal period. If there is no appeal, I'll contact you and you can pick it up and then you report it, I just repeat these.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next we have Cave Corporation, 42 Clock Road. Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 21, at Lakeville Public Library. On the petition of Cave Corporation, special permit is requested under Section 270-6.1C and Section 270-7.4, to raise an existing dwelling and instruct a new 911-foot square foot dwelling with a front porch that will be within setbacks on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Property site is 42 Clock Road, it is owned by Gerald Bates. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the Planning Department. And with me, let me do a couple of items into the record. Here we have a memo dated August 11 from the Board of Health. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing, 42 Clock Road, providing for dwelling, does not see two bedrooms. The Board of Health has no objections. Gonna be more than two bedrooms?
No, sir.
Okay. We have from the Conservation Commission, 42 Clock Road, no conservation concerns about approval. And we have a memo from the Planning Board dated August 18, at their August 14 meeting. Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition. Hearing from the Board of Appeals, the Board has no comments regarding this petition. Jamie, welcome back.
It's been a long time.
So tell us what's going on.
Jamie Visonett, Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. So this is essentially a tear-down and rebuild situation. Typically, what the zoning board has been looking for is that we don't make any setbacks more non-conforming, if possible. That is the case here. So the front, we're keeping the same setback to the right of way. We're improving the setback to fourth half, and we're more than 20 feet to the side of lot line and greater than 20 feet to the rear lot line. This is a little bit different because we are a corner lot, or else we would have more greater than 20 feet to fourth half on the side if it was treated like a side yard. We're under the 25% lot coverage, calculations are on the plan. One of the things that we did add on to this plan is an advanced treatment denitrification unit for the septic system. And this is with the new grading, that's also gonna, it's gonna take care of us not having to need a pump for the septic system as well. So that's really about it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to address them.
I don't have any, wait this second. Anyone else on the Board have any questions, clarifications? Again, as you pointed out, correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't look like or appear that you're infringing any more upon a setback than has already been infringed upon.
That's correct, we actually...
You're not creating any new setbacks?
Yes, we improved a little bit, I believe, in one case, but this is definitely a better scenario.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone in the audience who has any questions?
I have none.
Come on up. All right, so here's the problem. Put that tripod right in front of where...
I'm sorry.
So we're gonna have to move the whole thing, because... There you go, perfect. All right, right over there.
Oh, okay.
The star of the show. Now, Jamie, name and your address and ask away.
Hi, my name is Lisa and I live at 6/3 in Clark Shores.
Okay.
And he will be a neighbor, and I just think that it would just beautify the environment. I mean, it would be so nice to have something new there.
You're in favor of this?
I'm very in favor.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any follow-up questions after that comment? Anyone wanna deny this one day after that comment? Again, I'll make the comment, it's like we're getting rid of old and putting up new. So that's always a good thing. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the special permit.
As requested, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, motion carried unanimously. I think you just tell these guys the routine, they know it. All right, so we put this paperwork together, I'll read the next one in. Okay, next hearing is the Soja Properties hearing for 74 Lakeside Avenue. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 21, at Lakeville Public Library. Upon the petition of Soja Properties LLC, special permit is requested under Chapter, excuse me, under Section 270-6.1C and Section 270-7.4, to elevate the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, reconstruct a sunroom, and construct a 14-foot by 25 and a half-foot addition that would be within the setbacks on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 74 Lakeside Ave. Application and assorted documents were able to be viewed at the Planning Department. Okay. For the record, Board of Health sent a memo on August 11. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing for 74 Lakeside Avenue and has approved a septic plan for a one-bedroom dwelling on the lot. The Board of Health has no objections to the proposed dwelling, provided it remains a one-bedroom dwelling. Jamie, can I say one bedroom?
Yes.
Conservation Commission, Conservation Commission has reviewed the project and issued an Order of Conditions, which contains measures to ensure wetland impacts are avoided, therefore the Commission has no concerns with approval. And we also have a memo from the Planning Board dated August 18 at their August 14 meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding this petition. And Act 3 of the Jamie Visonett Show, what do you got, Jamie?
Good evening, Jamie Visonett, Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. 74 Lakeside Ave. We've been through the permitting process with the Board of Health and with Conservation and Natural Heritage. What they're planning on doing here is, this right now is kind of a cottage that's in, it's nice, beautiful views, but it needs some work. They're going to lift the house and they're going to put a new foundation underneath the house. They're hoping to use helical piles, but because of Lakeside Ave and the rocky soil that's on that side, it's tilt. If they can't get the helical piles to go down straight, or if they run into rock or any resistance, what we did is we worked with the town to switch it over to concrete footings. So they would be sonotube-style footings to hold up the house. They're going to reinforce the house. And then the front sunroom is going to be taken down and reconstructed as shown on the plan, exact same size. They're looking to make those improvements. They're going to also elevate that part of the house so that they have a little bit of breathing room in the 100-year flood elevation. They're gonna be picking it up from 57.3 to about 61.3. So that's a fantastic improvement. In the back, they're looking, if you go into the house, it's small. They wanna put on a 25 by 14 addition off the back. The house is on a slight angle, so any way you slice it, it does it. And it's a narrow lot, long but narrow. It's tight to squeeze in, so they were able to work something out in a 14-foot wide footprint, below 25 feet wide, where they can have a bathroom that will work, that we can get into the new septic system, and utilize that all on the same elevation with the new foundation system going in. That will allow us to construct a new septic system as well. So we're here tonight hoping to get a special permit from you so that we can get this construction and update this house to get it more code-compliant. Happy to address any questions that you have.
So, well, I'm looking at something. Does anyone else have any questions on the Board at this point? Not really.
Is the addition, rebuilding, something, or adding on?
It's, so the 25 by 14 addition is added on to it.
Okay.
The, just, and one thing I failed to note was, there's almost 42,000 square feet of land, and we're gonna be at a lot coverage of about 12.9%. And that's including a very long driveway.
All right, that's what I was looking for, so we're still well under the 25%.
Yes, sir.
What's the square footage of that house now versus what it will ultimately be?
That's a great question. I believe that the house was somewhere around 900 square feet. It's small.
So you're still gonna be...
It's not gonna be, it's not a big house, and it's not going to be a big house. No, especially with the one-bedroom restriction, it's really not, it doesn't make sense to make it a big house.
And again, what dimensions for the addition?
25 by 14. It's about the size of a garage.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
A single car garage.
Yeah. You're still under 1,500 square.
Well, under, yeah, well, under 1,500.
Pretty small.
Yep.
Anyone else other than me? I think Chris had a question, anyone else? I don't, Jeff had a question. Any comments from the audience? Somebody wanna speak for or against? Well, again, this is not quite taking old and building new. We'll put a little extra on, but it's, I really don't think 1,500 to 1,400 square feet is, it's gonna help the property value there, so. Anyone interested in making a motion?
I'll make a motion, grant the special permit.
Yes.
This is why. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that, Campbell?
Me.
All right, it's Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. And Kathy, save your breath, because Jamie knows to where his name is. All right. Clayton is next, I believe, right? Okay, we have a Clayton hearing, 135 Staple Shores Road. Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 21, at the Lakeville Public Library. Upon the petition of Richard and Hannah Clayton, special permit is being requested under Section 270-6.1C and Section 270-7.4, to construct a 16-foot addition in a 144-foot square deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Site work will also be done with, which, with done, which will reduce the lot coverage on the pre-existing non-conforming lot at 135 Staple Shores Road. Application and assorted documents were available at the Planning Department. Go through the memos here, we have one from the Board of Health dated August 11. Board of Health has received the petition for hearing for 135 Staple Shores Road, and the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed deck. Concom sent us a memo on the 12th of August. The Commission has opened a public hearing for this project. The applicant has begun preliminary work on the renovation absent the Commission's approval. The hearing has been continued until the Conservation's next meeting, August 26. The Commission requests the EBA to delay consideration for the petition for a special permit for this project pending the outcome of the Conservation Commission's review. So before I finish the rest of the memos, I will comment that obviously you guys are still gonna have to get Concom's...
Approval.
Approval. We can go through everything we need to tonight and see where we end up, but best-case scenario, you could hold pause a condition with the approval from Concom, but...
Obviously, yeah.
We're not gonna overstep our bounds. Okay, we also have a memo from the Planning Board dated August 18 at their August 14 meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition. Hearing of the Board of Appeals, the Board has no comments regarding this petition. I will make note that we did receive, because I don't wanna forget to read this into the record, we did receive a handwritten note from Donna J. Decost, Decost, 129 Staple Shores Road. Please note that I wish to go on record being in full support of this petition. So I guess we have enough butter, or someone in the neighborhood who was in full support. Okay, Jamie, you're up.
All right, Jamie Visonett, Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. We did receive Board of Health approval last night on the septic system. So that meeting was last night, and we did receive approval on that. The Conservation Commission, my understanding is a DEP file number had not been issued. It was issued two days after the hearing closed, so we do have to go back. I don't believe there was any comments or any issues with the application that they had. Realistically, what they're looking to do here is upgrade the septic system and put on a deck in the front yard and remove concrete patios and concrete areas that have been there for a long time. They are going to be doing improvements inside of the house and inside of what is part of the house, it's on, it's a little portion that's attached to the side of the house that they've already started with inside. May thought that that was building permit-eligible because there was no work disturbing activity with it.
Inside the house?
Inside the house.
Nothing to do with that.
Exactly. So that was the permit that Mr. Mitten was referring to with the work that's already commenced, as far as they're doing some renovations with the house. That being said, they are looking to put a deck off the front. They are gonna be making renovations to the house itself, improvements, and we need some relief for the deck to be constructed. There's also a small bump out between the little side piece that, and the main part of the house. I think it's 16 square feet that they're looking to fill, to square off with the house itself. This area here that we have hatched, showing the proposed addition. Overall, we will have a net reduction in lot coverage. We're gonna be going from 29.1% to 28.3%. And just to make everybody's mind rest smoothly, that only accounts for this lot, it does not account for the lot with the garage across the street. So we took the conservative approach on that. Yeah, so...
So the deck is on the front of the house, correct?
The, well, it's on the water.
It's on the water, it's on the deck, obviously. So how, I know Concom's obviously gonna get involved in this, but what's the setback from the water now versus what the setback will be? I'm only because I can't, my eyes are not that clear.
It's about 26 feet, John, so right now they have, they have some stones in the front, on the water's edge, and so then they have the lawn. So it's gonna be in the lawn, they're gonna put in, I believe, three sonotubes, and then they'll build a deck on it. And I don't think Conservation has an issue with that.
So it's gonna be 26, and it's going from 34, right? Yeah, it was 34 before, now it's 26.
That sounds about right, yeah.
Yep, judging by the plans.
Right, so an eight-foot deck?
Yeah, it's eight foot, it's eight foot.
Makes sense, yep. Any questions from anyone in the Board? Do we have any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Well, we have a couple of options here. I guess we have more than a couple of options. One way or the other, we could potentially condition, if we were to be inclined to approve the special permit, condition it on from Concom, or we could ask for continuance until Concom comes back.
So you're not gonna do anything anyway, right, Jamie?
As far as construction is concerned?
Yeah.
They're actually doing the work inside right now.
Inside, you're not gonna do any of the exterior work until Concom comes back?
Till Concom, so it's, I think we should just wait till Concom gets done.
What's purview, I find either way, does, I'm in a rush, are they in a super rush? Do they find if we continue it?
Everybody's in a super rush, but I don't think that this is gonna have an effect on them for the deck, because they have plenty of work to do with the house. The 16-square-foot portion on the house, that could be a problem with them.
Could I suggest to save them a trip back here? Do we approve conditions to Conservation? Because once Conservation approves it, then they're good, rather than wait to come back to us.
That was one of the options Jeff was just bringing up. Is it imperative that we do it at this point? Are they really, do they need that?
It'd be preferred if possible, because I think we're in front of the Conservation in about a week and a half, and...
26, I believe.
I expect approval at that meeting. I would, I anticipate.
So let me ask you this, so we expect approval at that meeting, but didn't you just say we just got the docket number, or you just got the docket?
So we had our first meeting, and the DEP file number hadn't been issued yet? So we got that two days after that meeting had occurred? So I think we would have been approved at that hearing. They did not ask for any changes at the hearing. They did not ask for any changes at the hearing.
Okay. Uh, as you guys know, I'm not in the habit of making motions, so if someone wants to make one, or if we wanna wait, or we got to you folks?
Yeah, I don't think we need to wait, just conditioning.
Well, I'm gonna have you and Anthony decide, make the motion first.
It's up to you. I would say to make a motion to approve with the condition that conservation gets approval.
Is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second one.
Do we have any further discussion amongst the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Lucky you don't have to say anything. Except Jamie covered all of these. All right. Next, we have the Hirth hearing, but Justine, Justine's Way. So, Jamie's leading up. I am going to open this hearing. Lakeville zoning board appeals acting in accordance with mass general law. Chapter Forty-Eyed Amendment will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August twenty-first, in the Lakeville Public Library, upon the petition of Carol and Sarah Hirth. Special permit is requested under section two-seventy-six-point-three and section two-seventy-six-point-four to allow a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot accessory structure barn with a six-hundred-square-foot overhang, which is larger than the fifteen-hundred-square-foot structure that is allowed. The property is five Justine's Way. Application and sort of documents were able to be viewed at the planning department by appointment. Okay. We have a memo from the Board of Health dated August eleventh. Board of Health has received petition for hearing of five Justine's Way and providing the proposed barn will not have any water or sewer connections and not be used as a dwelling. The Board of Health has no objections to the proposed barn. Any water or sewer connections?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but if they are, we will, uh, talk with the Board of Health and get that permit.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to that in a second.
Thank you.
Okay, from the Conservation Commission, five Justine's, uh, uh, excuse me, it was dated August thirteenth. Five Justine's Way, no conservation concerns about the approval of this petition. Planning Board dated August eighteen, at their August fourteenth meeting. The planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board has no comments regarding the petition. So, I believe that's it. Jamie, you're up again.
All right, good evening, Jamie Visnet, Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. Um, tonight, we're before you for, uh, an accessory barn, uh, this, at, on Justine's Way. The site has, uh, an existing house with a barn on site. Uh, the applicant, uh, needs more room, and they're looking to construct a forty-by-sixty, um, accessory barn with, uh, a ten-foot overhang, as discussed. Um, as far as, you, you had asked if there's gonna be water or sewer. The existing barn that's there now has water and sewer to it. I think they have a bathroom, so they don't have to go into the house to wash their hands or use the bathroom and, and get the, uh, the house dirty. I don't know if the applicant plans are doing the same thing in this barn. If they do, obviously, uh, proper channels through the building department and Board of Health and plumbing will be taken. Um, it wouldn't be used for housing or apartments or anything like that. This is purely for, um, you know, use of woodworking and fixing, uh, ATVs or things like that. Storage of lawnmower, that type of situation. Um, they are well under the lot coverage. Uh, they are going from thirteen point two, which they're at now, will be going to about fourteen point seven. Um, I do have two letters of support from abutters that I'd like to, I received them today, so I'd like to give them to the, uh, the board, if, if I may. And I also have a couple of color renderings that I also received today. Um, and I'd like to share those if
Yeah, that'd be great, I was just gonna ask, we don't have any.
So these are the two letters that came in email format to me today. And then, there's a rendering.
Does anyone want to say, yeah? Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah?
We have two people that are hard of hearing, we're having trouble hearing what you're saying.
I, I, I will, I'm just passing stuff around to them right now, we'll, we'll make
But I couldn't hear him either.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so here's what to do, in the future, we gotta figure out how to do this, we
Hold it up to you. Is that better?
That's, that's
Yeah, now, now, yeah.
Sorry for that.
Okay, why don't you do me a favor, Jamie, don't go through the whole thing again, just, because obviously, I know they're here for this. Just kinda give them the thirty thousand, what they're looking to do.
So the applicant's looking to build a sixty-by-forty, uh, accessory barn with a ten-foot overhang on it. Um, he's looking to construct it behind the existing barn, uh, further down, uh, behind the house. Uh, we mentioned that they're still gonna be well under the lot coverage. I think they're at thirteen point two percent, they'll be going to fourteen point seven percent. And, um, I gave the commission two letters of support from abutters and copy of the, uh, schematics of coverage of the building. I think that was about it.
How far behind the others?
If you wanna come up and take a look at the rendering, it's public record, I'm sure you wanna see what it looks like.
We weren't sure if it was, you're talking about the existing barn that
So additionally, what's gonna happen is we're gonna ask them some questions, and then, um, we'll give you an opportunity to follow up with some questions, so. You can take that back to the seat, look at it, we just need it before you go.
All right.
Um, if you'd like, you can take this as well, this is the site plan, that shows where it's coming.
So, gentlemen, do we have questions? I thought I heard their music, I was their music. All right, uh, so right now, they have water and sewer in one barn.
They, that is correct.
So this will be a second barn?
This would be a second barn.
And now, you're, you're thinking they'll, they'll need water and sewer in both of them, or?
No.
No, okay.
Nope.
It's good when you can turn around and get the direct answer. I was hoping you could give me that answer, because I didn't wanna send you and say, well, come back and let me know later.
Yeah, I, I'm glad that I could get it as well.
Um, so, I think you had said that they were gonna repair ATVs and what other?
It's just, it's purely, it's not for any type of a commercial purpose. Uh, this is purely just for their own, uh, enjoyment and needs alone. So, uh, what, storage of a boat, uh, jet ski, that type of situation. They just need additional room, and so they, they had planned on, uh, they actually had redrawn the plan prior to the regulation, well, during, before we knew the regulation change had gone into effect. Uh, 'cause it was still, uh, being reviewed by the attorney general. We submitted it, and that's when we were made aware of this action, so.
And I don't have it in front of me, well, but it's three bays, correct?
It is three bays with one regular human access door.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Does anyone else have questions?
Sure. Um, what's the height of the building?
I believe it's sixteen feet.
I did.
I believe, I believe the height is sixteen feet on the inside. Yeah, I think the, the clearance height on the inside is sixteen feet.
Okay.
I'd like to comment, Chris, I actually walk the street daily, not daily, weekly with my wife and dog. Judging by the plan, I don't think you'll be able to see the roof of this thing, 'cause where the existing barn is now, the grade drops off probably fifteen, twenty feet. I don't think you can see it in the street, honestly.
It does.
You'll have, you'll have your, you'll have a second.
Uh, are there any structures on each, on the building properties that are, uh, that deep?
No, uh, no, the houses are up closer towards Justine's Way. Uh, I'm unaware of anything further back. I believe on, um, one of the lots, there's a drainage basin closer to, um, closer to the intersection of the road, but, uh, I'm not aware of any structure that's, that, that is that far back.
Okay. Um, is it gonna be, uh, gravel play or paving up to?
I believe the intent is to do gravel access to the, to in front of it at this point.
Okay. You can ask and find out.
There's already gravel there, the sand is already there.
Okay, so it's gonna stay gravel? Jeff?
No questions.
Chris Campo?
No, I'm good, thank you.
It's quiet tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, I know we have some comments from the audience, so come on up, at the podium, name and address, and ask away.
Yes.
They're gonna send you up here to do a little talking, right?
Sorry, all, all there's two different areas. So I'm Laura Stewart, and I am on Nelson Shore Road, at nineteen Nelson Shore Road.
Okay.
And so, the original, the barn, and now, this is gonna be a second barn?
Yes.
So, it's up here, and it has a steep grade, and that comes right behind my property. And I guess, from looking at this, it looks like, uh, we weren't sure if it was, you were talking, getting a, uh, some sort of special approval from the first barn, and now we do know it's a second. It's probably right behind my house. I just wanted to know, one, is what is used for? If it's going to be, I was nervous about the first barn, it was built before even the house.
Yeah.
We were afraid it was going to be used for commercial.
No.
And it says storage barn for their toys. They need a second barn for toys.
They do, I, and I've actually witnessed the overflow of thing, items that they need to put in there. Uh, it's not gonna be used commercially.
And so, we're not gonna hear beeping trucks coming back, backing up, and
I can hear, I have a fifteen-thousand-square-foot office in Berkeley, all of our business can come up out of there. I'm guaranteed there will be no commercial business in that.
Okay, so they're not gonna, it's not gonna be, um, kitchen stuff, that they're going to be an overflow of, uh, storage?
Oh, no, 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 that's all in Berkeley, we're, yeah, no, that's all.
That was one of my main concerns.
Yeah, I understand that.
Ma'am, just for your education, um, keeping in mind, if we were to approve this, if they decided, or whoever, whether it's this individual or the subsequent owner of the property, if they decided they were gonna do something commercial in there, they're still subject to the bylaws in town that's say, that basically states only certain types of, um,
The town did assure me that it wasn't gonna be used for that. I was just very, um, nervous when the first storage barn went up without even a home there. And I was definitely, I was down here at the town and complaining about it. Um, and we weren't notified, you know, on the first one.
At that point, you didn't need to be notified. The, the reason you're notified now is because the town put a separate bylaw in place, or a special bylaw in place recently, that basically said over a certain amount of square footage of a structure based on the size of the lot, you need to come to us to get a special permit for.
And that first lot is probably pretty much the same size, isn't it?
Not the building, the lot, so the
I mean, the, the building itself.
Actually, the other building's a little bit bigger, the first building is, so this one's a little smaller.
And I mean, it's not, you know, for a residential area. I mean, we don't have anything like that around
Right.
this whole area, and that's, and we see this, once the leaves fall, I mean, it's an eyesore for us. So now we're talking about a second one right behind that.
Yes.
Do you have other concerns or questions other than, it's for the record that we
I did, so I had a concern even for the first one. They changed the grade.
We gotta, ma'am, ma'am, we just, we gotta stick to the second one. We can't worry about the first, the first one.
Okay, I am, so I'm, the grade, and now you're talking about putting the second one right behind that, right on top of the septic?
No.
Where that grade went down?
So it, it'll, it will not, it won't be on the septic. It'll be about sixty feet behind the existing barn, but it will be in front of the septic system. So I designed the septic on that, it, it will not be on.
Okay, so the septic is even further behind?
It is, the septic's down towards the bottom part where it comes down.
Right, it goes right down, and I mean, they changed the grade to be pretty steep.
Yeah.
And so I was concerned what was gonna happen with the water. We already had a water issue in the area.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I think my next door, not you, but the next-door neighbor on the other side has more of a water issue than
And there's a stream too.
Ma'am, one of, uh, we, one of the times, you'll get the time to present, you have to announce where you are and your address and whatnot, so, when she's done, you'll be up next.
So, what does the town feel about then, the water issue?
I, so you're
I'm nineteen.
Yeah, but you're, you're on the, you're on the upgrading side, I believe, right?
No, I'm on the down.
So you're down on, oh, okay, I understand.
Yeah, she's on the up, I'm on the down.
Got it, so
She has the horse barn, and so she's up above, and I go down.
Understood, all right, so I'm, my bar is
What are the potential water issues? Are there any water issues that's gonna create more runoff?
So the, the potential runoff issues here would be, the roof area is impervious area. And so we could, it could be a stipulation that we take and we put a roof infiltration system to offset any runoff from that roof. And then there's no impact. Or essentially none, I mean, anytime you modify dirt, there's a minute impact, or they can
Right, no, you get to, yeah.
But if we take the roof out, right now, it'd be running off over that ground. We'd take and infiltrate it into the ground, that would eliminate the concern.
So we can condition it to make sure that none of the, no additional water's gonna run down the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna have a water issue on my end. And I, I hate seeing, I tell you the truth, I hate seeing the, the shiny roof that shines into my living room in the wintertime, once the leaves are down. I mean, more trees to maybe soak up the water and block, I mean, it's an eyesore for me.
So here's what we're gonna do, I'm gonna let the next two speak, and if you have additional questions, we'll circle back up, just to make sure everyone has an opportunity.
Okay, so those were, those were my issues. I, you know, to tell you the truth, I didn't even know it was gonna be a second barn, which I was like, what, do we need a second structure at that size for?
Okay, um, this poor woman has a cane behind you, and she's gonna stand in here forever, so let's let her get up there.
Okay.
Okay. Nancy Chandler from seventeen Nelson Shore. And we're right behind the, um, existing barn, okay? The barn that's existing there. I'm concerned about the stream that's next to the house, um, where Laura is. Is that near where this leaching field is gonna be?
Uh, there's no streams or perennial rivers within, uh, streams within a hundred or perennial rivers within two-hundred feet of any of this work.
It goes to the lake, it's not near the leaching field.
So the leaching field is further down the slope, down into the bottom part of where it kind of flattens out. Um, what was cut many years back? Uh, I'm, I'm not, if you live there, you're probably familiar with that area down at the bottom. Um, so we're about sixty feet off of the existing barn, and we'll be before the existing leaching field.
Okay, so it's not gonna leach down into the stream?
The barn, or the
The, the septic system.
We're not changing the septic.
Yeah.
The septic's not being touched, ma'am, they're just putting an additional structure on the property.
So it's not gonna go on top of the septic?
No. All right, so the existing leaching field is right here.
Okay.
And the proposed barn is right here. So there's fifty feet from the corner, forty minutes, almost forty-nine feet from the corner to the corner of the septic. So there's, you can build twenty feet off of a house with a, with a leaching field in progress. We don't plan on touching the, the leaching field at all. Uh, there was discussion about putting in a roof infiltration system to take the water from the roof here and putting that into the ground, which we're
Also, what was talked about was, in that of the existing barn between ups and the barn, they were going to put, um, trees, you know, to make a, a buffer.
Which didn't happen.
I, my understanding was that there's a thirty-foot no-cut buffer along the edge of the property.
They did cut, and there was less trees, so maybe more trees put in that area would've made it nicer for the two of us.
And trees put in front of the And trees put in front of the, the new barn.
I can't speak this to what the trees...
No, ma'am, you need, you're gonna state your, your points and, and ask questions that are, we can answer, and then we'll take it from there. So, you know, I just, I don't want to sound short, but I can't say, "Yes, we're gonna do that, no, we're not gonna..."
I wish we could've talked even on the first one, but we weren't given the opportunity. It was going up before we even knew it.
Yeah, the, the first one, they were able to do by right, again, that was the first one, so.
With that house.
Well, they, they pulled the building permit for the house at the same time, so they built it as an accessory structure to the house?
I know, before the house.
But yeah, yeah, the...
And I just to clarify, because I don't want anyone watching, everything they did initially, at least what we're talking about...
It was approved.
It was, it was by right.
Without us being, uh, Butters being notified.
If someone has a piece of property that they're allowed to build a house on, and they pull a permit, they can build a house, you don't...
They didn't have a house. They were building the barn first.
Again, that was, they did that by right. There's, the reason you got notified on this was because it was special permit application. Not every permit that gets pulled and is issued, Butters get notified for.
So, can I ask, is this barn...
Wait a minute, let's finish, let's finish her, then we'll go to the next gentleman, then we have another woman. If you want to get in line behind her, he's with you, so he's gonna give you his spot.
Maybe.
If he's a smart man, you, well, I understand, so. Ma'am, do you have any more questions or...
Can we ask for a buffer?
Okay, would you, you would like to see a buffer?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, who's up next?
Well, my name is Jim Fraser at 19 Nelson Shore Road, and, and I, I was a developer. I was in real estate, built condos, housing developments, New Hampshire and here. And I can tell you something, that, I call it a warehouse. That warehouse that they put up, that huge building in a residential section would never pass anywhere I've ever done my projects. I couldn't believe it when I saw the size of that thing. I have a warehouse, and I would, I'd die to get the huge 12-foot doors that it has.
Are we talking about the existing one, or the...
Existing one's...
But you're gonna put another one, just like...
But the exist, we, sir, nothing, there's nothing we can do about the existing?
I know that, I know that. But what I'm saying is, so that's there now, and it's a horrible thing, and we got a road going up, there's noise and all kinds of stuff. But it's residential property, and you're destroying the residential. You're gonna put it up, another, another barn, or warehouse, whatever. I mean, this is crazy. It doesn't make sense. We're supposed to be residential, but, you know, Lakeville have the big requirements, you know, and so everybody's quiet, and you got, now we got that stuff going up there? I don't know, just me personally. Now, I gotta tell you the truth, I'm not, I'm an owner of this house, I'm with Laura, but I just want to make that comment, and I don't know what you want to do with it, but I feel that these people should have residential property, not having barns up there or warehouses. I'd love to have the size of doors that he has on that building, and the storefront on that building. It's crazy. But, so that's my comment, and you guys do whatever you want, gals, whatever, but I just wanted to say, get my frustrations out.
That's, that's what that microphone's there for, so. Yes, ma'am?
Wendy Chadborn, I'm at 17 Nelson Shore Road, and I'm in the in-law apartment for the house, it's already there. And I know we can't do anything about the existing structure, but when they're putting something else in to not impact the, I don't know, our, our visual area. The roof on that existing structure, it, it literally beams right through my apartment. Certain times of the day, the sun is just, it becomes beaming, and I have to keep all the curtains closed. So it would be helpful, at least if they're going to go forward with it, that they have to have some sort of screen, buffer, vegetation. They literally came in and clearcut a lot of stuff out of there, and there's just, there's nothing really between us and that building.
Kind of question to Jamie. You're not clearing any more trees to do this, are you?
No.
What's the...
So, is that what they're gonna mean done, basically?
What's the roof material? Is metal or...
Yes, it's metal.
But it's very reflective.
Metal tends to be reflective, so...
And it reflects all the way down, I mean, but I thought there was going to be a buffer put...
You, you want to come back up again? You can, if no one else is, just so that we can catch it on the mic, because people at home are gonna want to hear what you have to say.
So, we thought the first building was gonna have a satisfactory buffer, and it didn't. And the total number of feet that they said they were gonna have, they didn't. So how many more trees are gonna be cut down?
None.
None.
So, we can condition it to say, "No trees are cut down," and they're willing to...
Because they did cut a lot of trees down there, so we're saying that it's already, we're to the maximum.
Ma'am, we can only do what we can do about the second one, and they've agreed that if we condition it that no additional trees are cut down, they can't cut any trees down. If they do, they're gonna get in trouble, and it's pretty expensive to put up full-grown trees if you have to do it after the fact, so.
And so, how far from the property line is this building gonna be?
41 to the closest point.
To the rocks there?
Yes, to the stone wall, yep. That's twice the zoning requirement. Zoning requirement setback's 20 feet, so...
How many places have two barns on it this size that you can name in Lakeville? Come on, is this Lakeville?
Ma'am, I think you've made your point.
I, I'm asking, I'm asking a question.
I don't think anybody knows how many parcels of property in Lakeville have two barns on it.
I never thought this would happen here, never.
I know, I know there are a number of parcels in Lakeville that have multiple accessory structures on it, but I don't know how many there are, so...
Mine has two. Mine has two barns on it.
I mean, I was so thrilled once they put the house on. I was so, you know, Larry on the first one. So I'm a little Larry on this one. I'm happy there's a house, and it's a beautiful house, but they don't see those two barns. We do.
Understood. Does anyone else here to comment? Back to the board here. So what are we thinking? We know if we decide to go forward with approval, which I'm not saying we would or wouldn't, but we know we have no trees cut.
No trees cut and roof infiltration.
We know we would have a roof infiltration system to make sure no additional runoff.
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve with those two collections.
Somebody else want to second the motion?
I'll second it, so we can get this...
So we can discuss.
Discuss.
Okay, we have a first and a second, now discussion. If we have any. Does anybody else want to make any comments or have any other suggestions before I call the board?
Jamie, is there anything you can think of to mitigate kind of like the concern of the rendering of the potential roof? I don't know, is something difficult to deal with?
I don't, not off the top of my head, I, I really don't. The only thing that, that I, I could possibly try to ask is if there's some type of a coating that can be applied to the roof material. And I'm not, I don't even know if there is such a thing.
What color is it, green?
That's the schematic color that they gave me, so I believe that's this.
Green?
That is the plan, yep.
It's an app's the existing.
Correct.
It would look kind of silly with different colors, but...
Yeah.
It's just my opinion.
It might, it might look different if we put some kind of coating, if there is one on it, so. I don't have, I don't have a...
Yeah, I mean, other than changing the roof interior, I don't think we're gonna manage to do anything topical there.
Nope.
Well, I don't see anyone else looking like they're gonna ask a question, so I will call the vote. We have a motion on the table to approve the special permit request, the condition of no additional tree cutting on the property, and the roof infiltration system will be put in place on the new structure. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings to an end all of our petitions. I believe the only other item we have left is to approve the meeting minutes of May 15th and July 17th, both of which were included in our packet.
Just...
Well, May was that long, huh?
Yeah.
I take it with the amount of, oh, I know what happened, there's documents, maybe it's like there's a second set, so. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to approve those? You can, uh, actually, yeah, you can, even though you recurried yourself in the approving minutes, so. Somebody, is everybody here for that meeting?
No.
Yep, we were all here. So, somebody want to make a motion to approve those minutes for May 15th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May 15th.
We have a second.
Second that motion?
And discussion, all in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:24.
I make that motion.
For the second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. You can adjourn at 8:24.